This morning's meeting to order. Looking for an approval of the agenda. We do have an agenda addition in front of us. We'll take that right away as staff is here. The approval to hire full-time detox RN Kathy McKee and Troy Almanson.
And approval with the agenda with the addition.
Second.
With motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving into citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens that wish to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have the minutes from February 13th, 2018 in front of us.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve is presented in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have the employee recognition. Claudia Schroeder. Claudia, this is given to you in grateful recognition of your service. Twenty-five years of dedicated service. Thank you for so much for what you do for Clay County specifically right now. I know there's some headaches going on with the computer programming, but we really appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Kathy? Good morning.
Good morning.
Now, if I remember it right, this is something that you had on in a previous agenda, but we pulled because you had additional.
No, this is a different one.
Okay, all right. Yeah?
We're here this morning to ask for a request to fill an RN position that we have had. A couple of years ago, we added this RN position to offset the lead RN who was typically on-call 24 hours a day. This position has kind of stabilized detox and allowed us to kind of split some duties up a little bit, the on-call overnight type things. So the person who was in the position had been an LPN and then, once we received permission, once she got her RN, she accepted the position at that time, so.
And then Darren did the wage, the salary calculation. So there's a little bit of payout from this individual that's leaving. And then if we recruit a new RN at step one, there would be some additional savings there. Not sure if we'll find an RN for step one, but we'll put the ad out and see what we can find.
When was the last time we hired somebody at step one?
It's been a long time. Most of the salaries in our market are significantly higher, even with the long-term care facilities and clinics. So it's a challenge to find someone with a.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second.
And just a question. Kathy, so the net $8,136 savings, that represents the assumption of hiring at step one?
Right, correct, because the individual we have now is on step three, I believe. Step three. So it'd be the savings from having the salary at step one.
So if the market conditions don't allow us to get step one, that savings goes away?
Correct. That's correct.
Any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move into our 8:35 item, the approval of resolution to designate opportunity zones. We have Lisa Bodie from Morehead, Community Development. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
I'm excited for your presentation. I read all about it in the extra paper last week.
Well, we don't know a lot about the opportunity zones. That's kind of the exciting part, but there was federal tax reform passed at the end of 2017, and it included a community development program involving opportunity funds and investment vehicle and opportunity zones, which would be census tracts that met certain criteria for redevelopment and reinvestment. And the county is the applicant to the state of Minnesota, and Governor Dayton will be designating opportunity zones throughout the state. And he is limited on how many he can designate. Fortunately for Clay County, that you don't have to make a lot of decisions because Morehead includes the only zones or census tracts that are eligible to become opportunity zones, so you aren't having to pick between our communities and Clay County. There are three census tracts that qualify in Morehead. They include the downtown area, the area south of downtown, and the MSUM area, the apartments that extend a little bit beyond. There's a map of the zones within your materials, I believe. And then the area north of downtown, which actually would come up as probably as far as the courthouse here. So we have to designate first, second, and third priority based on the number of buildings that we know of that are vacant and in need of redevelopment in the downtown area. The city council has considered the downtown census tract to be first priority. Second priority would be the area to the south, because it also includes a number of commercial businesses as well as multifamily housing that was built in the 1950s and 60s and could also use some rehabilitation. Both Minnesota Department of Trade and Employment and Economic Development and the Minnesota Housing were in on the briefing on the program, so we assume there will be both an economic development and business development and a housing development component of the opportunity zones. But the program was just announced three weeks ago. The webinar with the state was a couple of days later, and the application is due, our application, the county's application, is due on Thursday of this week. And Governor Dayton has to make his decision later this month. The state has applied to the U.S. Department of Commerce for an extension to the program, but as of this date, that extension has not been granted. So we think we should move fast, and we don't know all of the details of the program, but there's very little downside in becoming an applicant. So we're excited about the possibilities, and we'd like to put our best foot forward.
I think it's important to note that while we don't know a lot about it, we do know that there's no cost to designate these opportunities.
There is no cost, and we've put a few hours into the application. We will prepare the application with your authorization and have it all ready to be submitted, probably tomorrow.
All right, questions?
Hey, I have one. This certainly sounds encouraging, and I see that the city council voted to support the.
That is correct.
So this opportunity zones, this mapped area, this would not override any current zoning ordinance, correct? That the city would have?
No. This is really just for investment purposes. The zones are census tracts. So it, any other regulatory.
Okay.
Ordinances, laws would still apply.
Very good. Thank you. That's my only question.
Any other questions?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
And that resolution includes the city's priority recommendation, correct?
That is correct.
Built into the resolution.
That is correct.
I don't see that designation. I mean, I, oh, in priority order, so that's exactly how you listed, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thanks for the clarification, Commissioner Campbell. So we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution 2018-14. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
We appreciate your support.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Keep us updated.
I'm Lou.
Will you let us know to later more about what it all entails?
Absolutely. We'll provide a briefing when we know a little bit more, whether we've been successfully selected, and then once the criteria come out about, you know, whether local banks are offering the opportunity zone, whether there are some special financing corporations that come out, and we'll continue to work with local businesses as well as potential investment vehicles to make sure that we take advantage of anything we can to make Morehead stronger and Clay County stronger.
And the governor can choose all three, or he can choose just any one of the three? Is that correct?
He can choose, he'll probably take a look at all the applications that come in from other areas of the state. We had to scramble a little bit to act quickly, so we hope that the early bird gets the worm. And the two of the three census tracts in Clay County that are priority one and priority two are among the 250 most needy census tracts within the state, so that weighs well for us. And also, though, he can only designate, I believe, 128. So there is some competition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Melissa. We'll move into our 8:45 item, our annual human resources department update. Darren Brook. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
All right, well, thanks for having me today. I appreciate that. I've got a couple of slides for you as soon as this comes up. Just to kind of follow along, this is, I think, the third update that I've given since 2015, 2017, and this will be the third one. So it kind of gives you an idea of where we are in the county as far as employees go, some of our statistics that we have. Well, Mark is fixing that. I think you all have the slides in front of you, so we can go ahead and start, and then we'll get the slides up if we can. All right. As you know, in the human resources department, we have three people, myself, Melissa Ivora. She's been here for about six years with HR. She's been here a little longer. Jennifer, she's HR coordinator. She does a lot of the benefits, as you probably know, and she's been here for about nine and a half years. And I've been here just over seven years now, which is hard to believe for me. Actually, it's the longest I've ever been in one job, so. The first slide that you're going to see is the 2018 employment status. Right now, when I ran these stats, we had 544 employees. That does fluctuate, as you probably know, every day by what we're hiring as far as variable hours, full times, whatever, but most of our workforce is made up of full-time. But as you can see on there, 22% of our workforce is variable hour, so we rely on them quite a bit as well. Second slide, kind of the employee distribution. Public health, 80. Social services, our biggest department by far. Juvenile detention and law enforcement, all our biggest departments. Kind of breaks down where all the 544 employees are. On the next slide, single versus married. We have 53% of our workforce is married, 47% is single. That isn't too much of a change from last year's statistics as well. Home record. Most people live in Minnesota. We do have a lot of, or some students that live out of state, but they're going to school in North Dakota, but we just list basically North Dakota, Minnesota as their home record as well. Next slide, male versus female. 59% of the employee workforce is female, 41% male. A lot of the female, obviously, are in our social services department and our public health department. Next slide is our longevity. And what's interesting about this is that 52% of our workforce has been here for five years or less. So over half of our workforce is fairly new, which is interesting. And up 65% of the workforce has been here 10 years or less. So this is kind of a trend that we're seeing as well as the baby boomers retire and new employees are coming into the workforce. Our workforce is getting younger as well. Next slide is our age of workforce. We have 55 employees that are 62 years or older, so they can actually are eligible for retirement at this point. That doesn't include the deputies that could retire earlier. So probably within the next couple of years, we're going to see more and more retirements coming.
Does that include commissioners?
And commissioners. No, I didn't add that.
Is that more of retirement age that we typically have, or is there?
That's about what we've had before. It seems like, you know, the baby boomers are going to start retiring more and more as we go along. Plus, I think some people are staying in the workforce longer than 62 as well. So as new people come in, you know, they're replacing those that are leaving. With that, though, goes a lot of experience. And as I think Kathy and Ron have explained, that a lot of their experience is walking out the door, people with 20, 25 years of experience in Clay County. So there may be some growing pains and need to look at some succession planning, making sure that that experience is passed down. In 2017, our hires, we had 143 total hires. As you can see on the chart, the breakdown of who we hired for which departments. Juvenile detention, we did the most hires for, but they also used the most variable hour people. So a lot of those hires are variable hours going through the system. As you'll see on the next chart, there are hires by type. 82 out of that 143 were variable hour employees. So public health is our next one. A lot of that is detox, and they also use a lot of variable hours as well. On this next slide, 2017 departures. We had 111 people depart last year. And so as you can see, when you're hiring 143 people and 111 are departing, it keeps the HR department busy just in that respect. And as you can see, once again, juvenile detention had the most departures, but then again, those are your variable hours for the most part. There are students that are coming and going and getting jobs once they get out of school, that type of thing, similar to the public health and highway. Highway, a lot of that was, some of that was their seasonal engineering techs that they hire every summer, their seasonal snowplow operators that are coming and going. And then the last slide that I have is our union contract status, just kind of a rundown. The deputies, the assistant county attorneys, social workers, and case aides are the unions that we negotiated with this year. My next item on the agenda is going to be their contracts. If you remember, the assistant county attorneys, we've already signed off on, so that's not a waiting sign contract. That's actually been signed off. And for today and the next agenda item, I have the deputy social workers and case aides that we have all had a tentative agreement with. So that'll finish that off for 2017. In 2018, we will have, let's see, corrections and highway, or I'm sorry, lieutenants and detox will be the next, and juvenile detention. Those will be the next three unions that we'll be negotiating with this year, probably towards the end of the year, October, November timeframe, so. The only other thing that all the other department heads have been mentioning is fees that we charge. We really don't have a lot of, we don't have any external fees aside from the ones of when people want a data practices request, and even then, we don't have a lot of those. A lot of times, it's for some kind of inquiry that we're doing with negotiations or arbitration or something like that. And the fact that a lot of our files are electronic now, it doesn't take very long to pull a lot of that stuff. If it has to be redacted, that does take a little bit more time, but the only, that's really the only external fee that we charge, and that's mandated by statute. So 25 cents a page, I think is what it is. We do, the only other internal fee that we charge is the $10 for a lost badge. So we don't even have a lot of those, so. We're not a big revenue generating department. Other than that, is there any questions?
Questions?
Oh, questions. As I was reading this, departures and hires, I look at the last page there, that juvenile detention had 28 departures, but when I look, we hired 46 in juvenile detention.
Yeah, this, a couple of years ago, when I did this briefing, Kevin asked the exact same question.
Oh, okay.
And I knew that, it took me a little while to figure out why that was so different, but what it came down to is the hires and the terms are not always going to match up because some of these hires were people that had left in November, December of the previous year. And also, sometimes we may hire somebody, and if they don't make it through the probationary period, then we will rehire somebody else without going to the board. So you could possibly have two hires for one person that left. So some of that is in there.
Okay.
To get this actual specifics of each one would take a lot of work to dive into and track who left and who got hired for those positions.
Because most of the others look pretty close, you know, other than that.
The other thing is when, like, social services hires or promotes somebody, you have this domino effect where they'll open up internally, and then they'll get somebody, and then they'll somebody, and then somebody will apply for that job, and then you're finally advertising externally for that job. So some of that happens as well. Most, a lot of it mostly in social services and.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, it's a good question, Frank. I think, I think part of it, too, is the fact that from time to time, Stephen likes to be able to build up his part-time availability. You know, I think there's always a concern that maybe if he only has 25 and he has to have somebody call in, the pool sometimes might not be big enough. Just because that they're hired, it doesn't mean they're always going to be putting in hours. It's just that creates some, as an available employee to assist. You know, you can, you know, you look at what would be your third slide here, Darren, and the employee distribution. When you take a look at all of law enforcement in Clay County, it's 89 employees.
And that includes the jail.
And that includes the jail. And the adult jail, where we house 90-some people, and they're shipping people all across the state.
Right.
And our juvenile detention center has 30 kids plus non-secure, but, and there's only 10 employees different. Fact of the matter is, is there's an awful lot of those 79 that are part-time.
Correct.
In the juvenile.
Correct. Yeah, they have by far.
They're available to work, but they show up as.
Yeah, I mean, you could have 30 variable hour, but you're still only filling the shifts, you know, you're not paying 30 variable hours all the time. You're paying them to work a shift here and there. Yeah, his numbers are up, but his actual work hours are fairly flat.
And as that area expands to have more beds, that likely will even grow more?
Probably.
Any other questions?
So you said the magic word, succession planning?
Yes.
So as we all know, there will be a significant amount of retirements on the horizon, so how are we as HR helping facilitate a discussion with our departments about what their succession planning and transitions will look like?
Well, I think, what was it, a couple of years ago, we had a training on succession planning. But a lot of it has to do, like, there's, in a lot of departments, there's not that level of, you know, lead, supervisor, assistant, department head. Like, social services, they do some succession planning because they have the director and then the supervisors, and then they're starting to pick, you know, key people that they think would be good supervisors, giving maybe they're, giving them more responsibilities, maybe sending them to additional supervisory training. Each year, we try to do a supervisor training, and that's not just for current supervisors. In the past, I don't know if you remember Dave Cornell, we would do, we've done him many times, once a year. And what ends up happening is we invite other people that we think will be good supervisors to attend those trainings. And so we're kind of grooming them in that way. There's a lot more that probably could be done, but I think that's something that we probably need to work on a little bit harder to have a more formalized track of succession planning rather than just saying, we think that would be a good supervisor, and then when that position opens up, you know, we have everybody applying for it, and then we choose how we, who we're going to select out of the application and interview process. So.
So those departments that don't have a natural succession ladder, is it, do we need to have more of an administration's role in kind of helping?
I think, yeah, I think so. I think each department head probably can identify their top performers. What we've found sometimes is people are happy with their job. They, for instance, social services just lost a supervisor, Stacy Christensen, and when that position opened up, they didn't have a lot of internal candidates that applied for that position. So, you know, you say, well, wouldn't anybody want to be promoted to a supervisor? Well, that's not always the case. So, yeah, it is something that we have to work on. I don't, there's nothing solid in policy right now that I can tell you, and it's probably something that needs to happen a little bit more.
Any other discussion? All right, well, let's move into your next item.
Okay, and I think you have a copy of all the contracts to be signed. I think I kind of laid it out pretty good in the agenda item information sheet that you have on what all the stipulations were for the contracts. Like I said, the assistant county attorneys have already been signed, and they settled for two and a half in 18, two in, or, yeah, two and a half in 18, two in 19, and two in 2020 for percentage COLAs. Everybody has an insurance reopeners in 2019. And so the case aides, social workers, and deputies, it did take a little longer this year. We did go into, I think it was January, end of January, February, for negotiations with all of them. We were almost to a mediator stage with the deputies, but we met one more time. We were almost to a mediator stage in, with the deputies, but we met one more time with them and came to some conclusions on the contract. And, so, all of these have been signed by the union so far, and I'm looking for approval for those contracts from this board. All of them are three-year contracts. The only really stipulations is the deputy first-class pay will continue based on the COLA rate. Remember, once they hit step twelve, three years later, they would get that deputy first-class pay. That was negotiated a couple of contracts ago, when we, when they were on their own grid, if you recall that. And to bring them onto the county grid, we did that. Clothing allowance was increased from five twenty-five to five seventy-five for the deputies. But, starting in twenty-nineteen, that will only go up by the amount of COLA. So, if, if next year, it'll go up by two percent, rather than having these big chunks of twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars or whatever.
I was just wondering if that's a good policy, though? That's just like an automatic wage increase, isn't it? If you just tie it to the COLA, then, I mean, why are we increasing clothing, clothing allowance all the time? Are we saying that the price of clothing is up all the time, or...
Well, I think after, you know, after a three-year contract, it's hard to determine sometimes. I know, a lot of times, we negotiate with, like, boots, boot and boots allowances for highway, you know, the safety boots, they, it goes up. So what they were paying six years ago, probably isn't the same as you're gonna pay for now. A lot of it is left up to, you know, do they wanna buy a good pair of boots, do they wanna buy a crappy pair of boots, or what kind of clothing are they buying? You know, so, I think it, it standardizes it a lot more if we just tie it to the COLA, so that now you're getting a couple buck increase every year, instead of a, you know, a fifty dollar increase every three years.
And it's cheaper than a one percent wage increase.
Yeah.
I mean, in reality, it's, it's negotiated because it's a perk for the employee, but it's cheaper for us.
Yeah, yeah. And, and then everybody knows what the increase is gonna be. It's the same for the deputy first-class pay and the sergeant's pay. You know, we've tied that to the COLA increase as well, so that there's no compression issues. If we said that we're not going to increase the sergeant's pay by the COLA, then the deputies could start catching up to that sergeant's pay. So we're trying to keep everything in line moving forward.
Commissioner Campbell has a question.
Follow-up to Commissioner Gross's question, on the, on the, for example, on the clothing issue, do, do they just then get that dollar amount paid to them? Or do they, do they submit receipts for clothing that they bought?
I believe they get paid twice a year. I'm trying to remember because some of the...
So it's a clothing allowance?
Some of the contracts are different. Like, Assistant County Attorneys get one, Highway gets their clothing allowance, the deputies get their clothing allowance. And some of them are paid all at once, some are paid in January, June. I'd have to go back in the contracts and look how they're being paid, so...
Brian has a question.
I know that, and I know that the Highway Department has to submit a receipt, and then they get reimbursed.
For boots?
For boots.
Yeah.
And there, and there's summer with their clothing.
I think that's a special language.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Madam Chair and Mr. Campbell, no, they receive the payment without the receipts. And then going back to Commissioner Gross's comment on the uniforms. Uniforms are not, you know, clothing, probably the price, you can go in and you can find shirts and pants on sale, uniforms you can't. They're, they're, they're a given, and they're going up on a regular basis, and if you wanna keep those people in decent-looking uniforms, they, they...
And I, and I, I agree. I, and I, I know, you know, when you see the deputies coming in here and they have their, whether they're road uniforms or...
Yeah.
Different, they...
A lot of different things.
They, they need to look representative too for the county.
Well, okay, I follow that question, then. So you're saying that whether they spend it or not, they get the money?
That's correct, Madam Chair and Commissioner Gross. Yes. Yeah. The, the sum is negotiated through contracts, and, and why is it that way? I guess it's something that, when they go in, they, they come up with their list of items, and sometimes it, it just, I don't wanna say it's easier, but, but it, it makes for a point that they have something different, and, and they are the most visible, probably the most visible unit of county government, and they use that for a bargaining chip to...
Yeah. I mean, I'm not opposed to give them a uniform allowance.
Right.
That's fine. That's, that's great that we do that. My question is that, what if somebody says, well, I'm not gonna buy new uniforms this year, I'm just gonna, so he just gets a five hundred and seventy-five dollar raise?
Yeah, then their supervisor better be on them, that, because their clothes are wearing out, they, you wear them every single day, and they do stand, I, I don't know if they stand for inspection, but going back to my old days, you stand for inspection on your uniforms, and they better look good.
Okay, very good, okay. I guess I would like that pause, how some are, others gotta be up. Not just here's five hundred and seventy-five dollars, so...
Yeah, that's a good point, very good point.
Commissioner Campbell?
A question, do, do we need, do we need separate motions on each, for each...
Yes, please.
I would probably say yes.
All right, I would, I would move that we authorize the agreement with the deputies.
All right, we have a motion to approve the deputy contract, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I would also move that we authorize the agreement with, two-year agreement with the social workers.
We have a motion to approve the social work contract?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I would also, I would also move that we authorize the, through your contract with the case aides.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we have all three. Darren, I just wanna say thank you. I know this is a longer process than sometimes it has been, and I know for a fact that you've really stuck, stuck with the recommendation from this board, and I know those discussions can get heated. So thank you for relaying where we were hoping to be with those talks.
Good, thank you. I would say it was a pleasure.
Not always.
Thanks.
You're welcome. All right, we'll move into our nine o'clock item, which is the Highway Department. Dave and Eric, welcome.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before you start, I know that we've had a lot of conversation because of the weather in the last couple of weeks, and I know the weather system in the last two days was challenging, and driving in, the roads that I were on were clear, I, guys were out working on them, so I appreciate the extra time and effort that your crews are putting in to really try to get on top of what you've been presented in March.
Sure. And, one thing we did in-house, was we took a look at our existing snow and ice policy, and it has been quite a while since we reviewed that, so, we were gonna do that with our supervisor group, and then maybe bring forward potential changes, and just for more discussion with Highway Tracking Committee?
Right.
Just to make sure if there's something that, you know, there's, there's, no storm's ever the same.
Right.
And if they happen on weekends or holidays, it seems like that's when it generates the most concerns and calls and, uh, safety issues, and we wanna make sure we're trying to meet, you know, what we feel is the proper expectation, and if we're not, I think we need to change a little bit on how we do business, but, you know, I don't wanna go too far, you know, and start chasing every snowflake or, you know, but, so there's kind of a balance there, and, you know, I realize that it's been kinda tough the last couple of weeks.
And I guess I, I'll give Commissioner Campbell as a statement too. I guess my biggest concern is that, a lot of times, you have these school buses that are breaking tracks first.
Sure.
And, I don't think that, you know, that's something that we should expect the school districts to have, buses full of little kids. I mean, many of the, the elementary kids got on the bus first. There's a kindergartner down the road from me that gets on the bus at six-thirty, and the plows aren't there yet. And, so I think it, it just needs to be a discussion as to when and how we get out, because like I've said earlier, it's, it's one thing to have a bus driving over an inch of, of, of snow, but, you know, once you get four to five, then it gets kinda dangerous.
You kinda stole my thunder.
I'm sorry.
But I, I couldn't agree more with that, and I, I think, you know, and I'm glad to hear you're gonna relook at it and bring it to the Highway Tracking Committee, but I, at the same time, I, I hope you can bring with us what your communications have been with the different school districts within the county, and what their expectations are, and, and how that communication process works with them. I think that, that will be very helpful to, to reestablish a, a new plan, so, thank you.
All right, well, you have a couple of things first. You wanna talk about the State Highway Ten?
Yeah, the, the first item on my agenda is advert, approval to advertise for County Road Ten Batuna's paving project. This is the project that we were awarded the Local Road Improvement Grant on. The application that Eric put forward was for a two-mile segment between the city of Downer or Trunk Highway Nine and I-94. Our current five-year plan had that piece, along with several other miles, already included. So last year, when we approved our plan, do you remember the total length that you had?
Well, four miles.
We had about four miles included in, for, for, so what we'd like to do essentially is, is speed this one up, and half the project would be covered by that grant, and then we would use our gas tax dollars to, to complete the other two miles. So, rather than just complete a small, the smaller project that we applied for the grant on, that's what we'd like, that's what this project consists of. It's a four-mile project, it's a mill and overlay, four hundred and fifty thousand's covered by the grant, and then, I believe, like, there's a, the remaining...
Well, the, the grant should cover around half of the project.
Okay.
Miles of the fourth?
Yeah.
So the other two was in the plan?
Yeah, correct, yeah, it's already in the plan. So there's about, it's about six hundred thousand dollars of county money, about four hundred thousand dollars of grant money, so, it'd be really nice to get this one knocked off, and it was, it was, I guess, I think I said earlier, when I talked about the local road grant, there was only nine counties in the whole state selected, and we were one of those nine counties, so it was, I feel we're pretty fortunate.
Well, I, I appreciate the fact that this is on, that we're talking about this, because this is one of those roads that's really deteriorated in the last two years. I mean, it, it really, if you get out of those wheel rusts, it pushes you over.
So we're looking at potential bid open date of April tenth at nine o'clock.
I would move approval of the advertising for bids for...
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of revised letter of support for the Glendon Quiet Zone.
We've been working with the city of Glendon on our project for this coming summer. As part of the project, we're doing some of the quiet zone improvements that they need to have in place for their quiet zone, as part of our project. As we're nearing the finalization on the, on the design on the project, it's a standard hundred-foot median on each side of the railroad tracks, is what you kinda need for quiet zone requirements. Sometimes, these hundred feet cut off accesses to business or homes, and that's kinda the case here. As we started looking at access in and out of the elevator and fertilizer plant in, in Glendon, it just wasn't gonna work for them. It was cutting off several different moves for their businesses. These landowners spoke with the consultant that's working with the city of Glendon, and there was some flexibility there. We took a look at it, and then what we'd like to do is just modify our letter to include those improvements. So rather than a hundred-foot curbing on the very north side of the mainline tracks, it'll be like a sixty-foot curbing. So the language has just been slightly altered. Like I said, the, the letter was kinda drafted up by Stan Tech Consultants the first time, and she helped modify it this time as well. It just kinda keeps the quiet zone, they're, they're to a point where it's called a notice of intent, so it's, it's not a done deal yet, but they're just working through all the requirements for it, and this letter of support will be just edited a little bit to include the changes.
Is that gonna go for both sides of the road?
It's, no, on the south side, then it can be a hundred feet, 'cause it doesn't really, yep, so, towards the school.
Okay, but the north side, you're going towards the elevator.
Yep.
But the other way, you go through the street, towards the city park.
Yep, and I, I don't believe that that has the impacts, as far as turning movements in and out, so...
Okay, so that sixty-foot median will probably only extend halfway up to that intersection. That intersection, the median won't even be near it at all.
South side of the tracks?
South, or north-south, the intersections will be clear.
All right.
Any further discussion?
I'll move to...
We have a motion to approve the revised letter?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we'll move into your department update.
All right, I, I use kind of a similar format from last year, and some of the information just to kind of run through our department a little bit. I got a little PowerPoint here, and hopefully the...
It's going now, so...
Any residents that are out there will be able to follow along. If you wanna go down to page two, like I said, last year, our Highway Department, Highway Department is comprised of three main areas. We got maintenance, engineering and administration. Maintenance Department has twenty-one full-time employees. We've got eleven motor grader operators, six maintenance workers that drive plow truck, and do maintenance projects in the summertime. We've got two staff in the shop, we've got one sign staff, one maintenance foreman, and five part-time snowplow operators, so, actually closer to twenty-six when you add the, the part-time plow drivers. We've got six full-time employees in our engineering department. They design all our Batuna's plans, our box culverts, and our grading and paving plans. We've got four in the administration, that would include Eric and I, and then two up in the front office.
I have a question, now, you got eleven motor grader, does that include the plow trucks too, or what?
Well, the way it works is there's eleven maintenance districts, so there's one blade in each district. Yeah, we've got six full-time truck drivers in each district, and then the five part-time plow drivers. So the five plus the six get teamed up in the wintertime to make eleven or twenty-two.
Okay. You have one plow and one grader, pretty much in each district.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's what I thought we had, it was all eleven.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't see the plow, all the ball. Thank you.
On page two, I just showed our organizational chart. I did do some work with this, with Darren Brooke, a couple of years ago. The, the way it's laid out isn't really ideal, and it's just, there's too many layers side by side, and I've got some ideas, I'm making some changes, I just gotta kinda further finish that up a little bit. But for the most part, it does work pretty good. Everyone has different sections. We got the office, we've got the engineering technicians, then we got the maintenance, include the blades and the trucks. We've got the shop foreman with the diesel mechanic, and then the sign department pretty much does replacements of signs and installs barricades and detours and flood control type On the next page, talks a little bit about our system. Like I said, a lot of this information you probably already know. We've got two-hundred-and-eighty-nine miles of paved county roads and four-hundred-and-fifty-four miles of gravel. Now, this is on the state aid system and the county road system kinda combined, so our, our entire jurisdiction is about seven-hundred-and-forty-three miles. We also contracted townships, and they have seven-hundred-and-forty-five miles that we, that we contract with, that we, we utilize those miles for our maintenance numbers. So our total system that we maintain, summer and winter, is fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-eight So that kinda leads into, kinda like along what Commissioner Mojo was talking about, with regard to winter maintenance, we got about twenty-nine-hundred-and-seventy-six lane miles. We've got eleven maintenance districts. Like I said, there's two pieces of equipment in each one of those districts, so it's two-hundred-and-seventy miles in each district, divided by twenty-two, it's about a hundred-and-thirty-five, and these are rough numbers, it's not quite that perfect, but it's fairly close. Each, each person has to plower about a hundred-and-thirty-five miles. Brian and I were talking a little bit yesterday, and we decided, well, if you had a twelve-hour shift, how many miles and how fast would you have to do that? There again, it doesn't always work the twelve-hour shifts and things, but if it was a perfect twelve-hour shift, each piece would have to travel eleven-point-three miles an hour for constant twelve hours in order to finish the roadway, so, it is a big undertaking, and, like I said, I'll be going through that snow and ice policy in, in greater detail. I know in there, it does say, if the snow is above four inches or so, we like to try to get everything cleared in, in a one time, you know, one-day period. We try to get it all done. And it's typically about a twelve-hour shift, if it doesn't have a lot of wind, where you have to go back and redo some of your roadways, so, the tricky part is kind of is, if it's on a weekend or holiday, do you finish the entire system, or do you just do your, you know, your prioritized roads? And it does, you know, we do have a priority laid out in there, high-volume paved roads, low-volume paved roads, high-volume gravel, low-volume gravel, so...
Do you solicit the townships input on those... Do you solicit the township's input on those prioritization of the gravel?
I think for the most part, I think the guys, I guess, no, the answer is probably not. I, I think the guys kind of know where the travel is, you know, where the, where the higher volume roads are, probably where, if there's a certain facility or a bunch of homes or something in there. But it is a communication topic that would be good to have just to make sure we're not missing something on a, on a critical route.
Well, just to bring it, you know, we've got that township officers meeting coming up and so I think just to say, you know, we, here is what we typically do when there's a snow event on a Saturday or Sunday, which is the one that Commissioner Gross and I got the most calls about. Here's our policy.
Sure.
If there's a higher need gravel that maybe we're not.
Yep.
We haven't identified, you know.
It's a great idea.
We really appreciate your input.
Yep, now's the time to gather that information, you're right. Any questions on the maintenance? Next slide is, I just tried to pull together a little information on what we got going on this coming summer. If I missed anything, Eric, if you want to jump in, I tried to grab this off our five-year plan. Last year, last fall, we did start County Road 57 Bridge. We removed the old one and I believe we pounded in most of the piling for the abutment, so we will be finishing that project up this spring and early summer. We do have a cost share project with the City of Moorhead, it's on 11th Street North, right up by the intersection with 15th Avenue. I believe the city is going to be putting in two lights, they're going to put lights there and they're also doing, I believe, the lights for the state's project on Highway 75. And Clay County has the responsibility of two of the four lights on the intersection with 11th and 15th. So that's in our five-year plan. We've got the, the paving that we bid out on February 13th on County Road 9. The bids turned out really good and that helped our five-year plan quite a bit. We've got our project in Glendon, it's going to be an urban reconstruct. Again, that was a, it's been a really good cooperate, cooperation with City of Glendon. Everything's went really smooth, we've been working with Altegg, their city engineer. And Eric told me yesterday that the plans are 100% approved by MNDOT. We've got all the right-of-way complete, we're still waiting for the right-of-way easement to be signed by BNSF. So that is the last thing to get completed before we can go and do bids on that one. So we're close, we could get that BNSF agreement signed any time. So we're anticipating that one as quick as we can, we'd like to get bids on that, it's kind of a real big, high-dollar project and I think it's going to spur a lot of interest. We've got our County Road 10 project, we're looking at probably, is it a early April lighting on that, is that right, Eric? That's going with the Local Road Improvement Grant. And then we, we've also been working, we've been kind of the lead county on a three-county project for the H-Step lighting. So we've got eight intersections in our county alone and, you know, at night those sure are nice, I know if you come up to those, it's, it's kind of nice, nice to get those done. You know, we are responsible for the power on those, but I think it's.
It's minimal.
Yeah, it is, and it's minimal and it sure is nice for safety and it works out pretty good. The next page, I just wanted to kind of bullet point a little bit some of the meetings that we have and if I'm missing any, I guess, or if you feel there could be more, I guess, just feel free to let me know. Every year, we, we started with our township calculation meeting a few years back and this past year it was the most well-attended we've ever had. There, there must be, had, the whole room was full, in fact, we had to get extra chairs two different times, so, yeah, so that worked out really good. We also have a five-year construction plan, public informational meeting coming up. You, you as well as most county departments attend the spring and fall township officer meetings. We have the rural city roundtable meeting coming up here in a few weeks. And then Eric and one of our staff, usually it's Seth Pfeifer, work, they hold a MS4 annual informational meeting. It's a required meeting that we're, that we're required to have for our MS4, it's our stormwater within the city limits meeting if there's any concerns or questions on that. Did I miss anything, Eric? And I think the next page, I guess, talks a little bit about our current workload, that we, what we got going on and where we're at. We're currently finishing up our Glendon project for 2018 as well as the County 10 Mill and Overlay project. We're working with the City of Holly, it's out in the year 2021, but it's a kind of an urban reconstruct, possible Heartland Trail project. We've got a meeting with the City of Holly in a couple of weeks on that, so we'll see if we're still on the same page and make sure that we get a typical section that, that they can agree to because that'll be kind of a cost share on that one as well. We're working.
David, excuse me, is that the, is that the one that Frank and I were invited to? We haven't, I haven't got a confirmation on the date, I know they're looking, I thought they were looking at the 12th or the 13th.
I think Colleen asked her to schedule that one and send us notification, but I, I believe it's penciled in, is that correct? But I don't.
April 10.
Was it April 10?
Oh, maybe, if I can check on that. I know, I didn't hear back, so I.
I haven't got anything definite on yet.
I got it April 10th at 4:00 PM in Holly. I'll send out an email and verify everything.
Thank you. Eric's been working with the Heartland Trail Committee. I believe they've nailed down a suitable trail alignment on that. Now we're just towards further investigation as far as there's, could be some additional right-of-ways needed and if there's any other permits or anything or roadblocks, we're working with that committee. I believe Commissioner Wayland's on that and instrumental in moving that forward. We're working with the City of Fargo on a County Road 1 or North Broadway Bridge slope stability project. That'll be ongoing for probably at least the next year or so, gathering data and then getting a final recommendation on what we can do to give that structure a little more life and make sure that it's safe. We're currently working with Braun and SRF on that countywide pavement management project and I believe they, they've got some of the data put together. We've given them all kinds of information that they need to help formulate the report on that, so we should see that sometime later this summer or early fall. And we're also working with our sign department on year two of replacement on all the street and avenue signs in the county. So last year, our sign foreman fell and had kind of a, he was, he was not working for several months, he hurt one of his, his elbow. So, but he did work hard this fall and this winter and he's got pretty much all the signs, so he was able to get caught up this winter. So it worked out good that the weather allowed him to get caught up on that and we'll start with year two. The last couple of years, we've been having a really hard time finding a sign assistant, someone to help him, someone with a CDL that would drive the big sign truck, pull and pound post and help him do the work that he has to do. It's been really hard to find replacements. Prior to this, we had a retired North Dakota DOT sign foreman working with us and we had absolutely no training. And so we had a couple of good years and then we had a couple of years now where we haven't had anybody, but I believe we've got an individual that's interested this summer, so I'm looking forward to filling the role on that. The last thing I want to talk a little bit about would lead into the, the fee structure with regard to highway department. I think it's something that the board asked all county departments to take a look at.
And I will preface it by saying, looking at your fee structure was the reason I asked that we start because I think there are a couple in here that we really probably should, should look at, so.
Sure.
I appreciate that you're bringing this.
Yeah, you got, we currently sell eight different types of permits and I, from what I remember, this all started for my department back in about 2009. And it kind of started with the harvest permits and the moving permits and utility permits. These were permits that the county always had, but we took a look at them and they, they do require a fair amount of staff time, so we tried to put in appropriate fee that would cover that staff time. I believe that the, the fees that we currently charge are adequate with the exception of one permit. Like I said, I noted on here that I would look to recommend an increase in the access permit fee by, you know, and rather than making a big jump, I guess I would suggest possibly a $25 per permit fee. The current charge for an access permit is $100. So typically what happens is if there's a field entrance or a new, a new home site that's being built in the county, they come, they fill in a permit, they draw a little map on there, they maybe go out there with a stake and they locate kind of where they feel it should be. We send a staff out, he takes a look at it, he has to measure the ditches and and size up the length and as well as the diameter of that culvert by looking up and down the other ditches to see what's upstream and downstream. Make sure that we don't put too small of one in or anything. We come back, he writes up some special provisions, this is one of our staff, it goes to Eric and it goes to me and we both review those and then it goes back to the landowner. So all the time that they do this throughout the whole year gets tracked on their time cards and we, we added that out and it's actually been close to about $200 per permit because we do also send them out there once it's complete to make sure that somebody didn't add more pipe or make the slopes of the ditches too steep, which would be dangerous if a car left the road. In general, just to make sure that it's put in the same spot that we wanted. Sometimes if you get homes too close together, our access management policy has provisions there that, that it's, it's set for a certain distance. So we, we just do another double check on there to make sure construction's complete. So on the little graph there, you can see all the, the moving permits, utility and access and the harvest permits. And with the exception of the access permit, which is roughly showing that it's been about 200, a little over $200 of staff time, that's where I would guess I would recommend possibly, being that we have to go out there twice.
So your recommendation is to change that to 125?
Correct.
But I mean, if I look at what, I mean, we still kind of offset the cost by $2,400 in what it actually cost in 2017 versus what. The, the fee is not covering what it takes staff to do the actual permit.
Correct. You know, and another thing that when I took a good look at this, I wanted to be somewhat consistent with what other counties are doing. So I took a really good look and I didn't bring it in, but I did start a little chart on, you know, what other counties are charging for some of these permits and it's all, it's pretty much all over the board. There is still some counties that do a lot of this work for free. I think Cass County was one of them, so I called up there and I asked, you know, what their philosophy was on it. And some counties take the position that this is a fee that they feel that the county should offer. There's other counties, I think Douglas County, I think they charge $200 for an access permit. So there was some counties that were a little more than we were, there's some that do it for free, but for the most part, our permits are almost spot-on with like, in average, what other counties are charging. So I felt like we were, we were pretty close, moving permits being $25, as long as it's not an overweight permit where we have to take a look at bridges and different routes and other things that are more important. But the access permit one, it did seem like, I guess I felt we were a little low on.
Commissioner Gross?
Thank you. The, the access permit, Dave, is that, there can be different reasons for those, right? So you, I know we allow one access for, in a given area for egg.
Yep, per quarter, I believe it is.
Per quarter?
Yep.
So maybe there could be a new one requested for that reason, but then there could also be one requested for somebody who is building a new home.
Yep, maybe about 10-acre little piece in the corner.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have to take a look at our access, that's another thing that's been taking a lot of time lately and maybe Eric can lead into this, but just reviewing our access management policy, making sure that we are doing things according to our own rules.
I, I guess what I'm getting at is, is when we, when we start looking at, at the development of, of new homes in the rural area, I think we need to pay attention to all the different fees that, that are associated with it. Not, you know, not taken one by itself.
Sure.
But all of them and are, in, in the end, is it, is it advantageous for somebody to, to live in, in Clay County versus somewhere else? So it's just something to talk about.
Sure they'll have like a septic one for sure.
Right, yeah, but, but all those different fees, we, we don't want to price them out of the market either.
Got you. And that's why I didn't feel like we would, you know, want to go up to $200, which kind of would capture the cost. Maybe, maybe as a, as a service to the residents in Clay County, we would absorb $75 per permit and we would charge them 125 per permit.
And one last question, when you're talking about the sizing of the culvert, culverts, does that have to be approved in a county ditch by the Watershed District?
Correct.
So you, so all of those still, it goes through the process of the Watershed District?
Yep, and that's usually one of the special provisions, correct, on the access permit that.
Okay.
The other one that is worth talking about is that annual overweight permit that we haven't addressed since 1980.
Sure.
I think as engineers, you understand that the damage to the road is far more than $100. Do we have a proposal for what you want to do with that permit?
To be honest, that permit was kind of put in place many years before the, you know, the last 10 years, the legislation's changed so much. When this permit was put in place, pretty much the whole county was a 9-ton system, max legal loading was 73 to 80. So what this permit allows someone to do is basically carry 80,000 pounds on a roadway that's real close to a 10-ton roadway and it gets them there. So it's not, you know, the, the actual permits maybe that would do what you're kind of saying would be the ones that are 100,000, 150,000, 200,000. Of course, those ones we still require to have every amount of axles on there so they don't ever put more down pressure than a 10-ton vehicle would. So this permit, it's a little archaic, we don't sell that many, I think we only sell like 10 of them or so to some businesses that are, are real close to it. Most of the time, if they're on a gravel road or something and, and this allows them basically to get their commodities to a, the main 10-ton system. So, but you're correct, it, you know, we have not changed that fee since, that I know of, since we started, so.
Commissioner Gross?
Can you say the harvest, oh, seasonal harvest, $60, what is that, the semi-farmers pay $60?
Yep, so basically that, that allows them to haul, I believe, have a 10% more ability to carry their, their crop. That one is unbelievably cheap, they probably save $60 driving from the edge of the field to the road. But, but it's, it's the same cost up, up and down the valley for the state, you know, and it's, it's really hard. That's one that would be nice if our entire group, you know, the entire, all, all counties and all states would take a look at because it's, it's so cheap. $60 per truck and like I said, they easily make that up in a very short time. The six and seven axle permit, those cost 300 and 500. So, you know, I know it costs money to construct and build one of those trailer systems, but there again, I've heard they make that up in one trip as well. So I mean, the, those permits, you know, the 60 doesn't sound like much, but, you know, someone may think $500, that's pretty expensive to have a permit to haul 97,000 pounds, but that's 17,000 additional pounds that, that they potentially could carry. Most of the time, and it's kind of funny how the, the state basically tailored language up for that permit, it's really hard, almost impossible to build something that can actually do that. I was talking to one of the local gravel producers in Clay County and there is now, there's a construction materials one. I think I came forward not too long ago, getting approval to sell that in Clay County and, and he can't even build something, you know, because the six and seven axle permit in my mind in our area was somewhat developed for trans systems. Well, those guys, they drive to a long skinny pile station, they load up this configuration, they drive into the plant, they drive on something that tips them sideways. But for construction materials, those guys are coming in and out of gravel pits, in and out of construction zones and things, they can't have a 75-foot-long trailer, it's just not going to work. They can't back those things up. So for the most part, some of these permits, you can't even actually achieve the maximum weight that they're paying for. But nonetheless, even if they're hauling 2,000 or 4,000 more pounds, like 82,000, 84,000, 87,000, they still make that permit fee up in, in not, in a very, very short time.
I was wondering more, how is that regulated? I mean, every farmer has, do you send out a notice that every farmer has to pay that or they come in and get it?
It seems like it's fairly common knowledge amongst the groups, but we do have those, the sugar beet pre-haul meetings, the truck haul meetings. And those are in Saban, Glendon, Felton, and there's a big one in Moorhead, so that's talked about at that time. I talked about it, the commercial vehicle.
I was hoping they don't pay it.
I guess if you got pulled, only if you got pulled over, we would not know. There's probably a certain amount of people that do possibly haul and some people may buy a state harvest permit and not a county one. And, and you know, there was, years ago, that was kind of a standard thing, but the commercial vehicles have kind of really resonated that they need, any, anytime you're on any, whether it's Norman County, Clay County, Polk County, you need to have their permit for their roadways, you need a state permit for state roadways. So I think it's been talked about quite a bit at our meetings, but there is no way to track it or check it unless they get pulled over.
Okay. Well, I, I think we should look at increasing that access permit one. I really would like to look at bumping that annual overweight permit up 25 or 50, but I, I think that's a discussion we should have at Highway Tracking.
Okay.
Why don't you have that with those guys and if, if nothing else, we'll move on to our next item. Thank you very much, guys. Thank you. We do have a closed session that's scheduled for 9:30, we're past that, so I'm going to request that we move to our number eight item.
I would, I'd move to close based on the.
Show the motion to close. And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we are now closed. All right, we're good. Brian, you want to do number six, request for change order, number 10?
Yes.
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. What you have before you is a change order number 10 in regards to the two projects out, out here that we're working on, the correctional facility and the law enforcement center. This one deals with the correctional facility, and in my memo, I tried to highlight the issues that are at hand here, and they, this was an electrical security conduit feeds and nightlight feeds to the cell area, and that was at our request. The jail staff wanted the nightlights to be continuously activated, and it wasn't something that was in the design, that was something that was sought afterwards. And I, maybe I just should qualify some of these things, because it's very easy to think that, say, if they designed it properly, there shouldn't be any change orders, and I suppose that's, that's probably right, but when you go through all of the elements and the changes and people's attitude, because they come in as long, as well as DOC, and when they got the bid approved, the final drawings, the design were like 95 to 99%. And the fire departments have come back, the fire marshals have come back, DOC comes back and looks at things, and then our own people come back and say, hey, this door swing really wasn't how we wanted it, so there's a change or something like that. In this case, it was the nightlights, and then when you start talking about nightlights and electrician and supplying this to every one of these cells, it gets to be expensive, and that's why you'll see a $35,000 change order on this one. And this was a 29,000 on the nightlight coordination, and then also there was a safety concern, and I say safety concern, not that the electric box was improperly built, but there is a flash point within those, and if you do what they did to it, prevent any arc flash on these electrical boxes, this, this prevents that from happening. And I'll say this to, to the commission, that our committee, which two commissioners sit on, probably reviewed every change order two, three times by the time it gets put in, in final state and, and comes here. So with that, I certainly will answer any questions that we, I can about these two issues, but if not, I would ask for approval of change order number 10.
Questions?
On these contingency orders, I mean, I realize we've got so much money to build in contingency, and this is what's going to be taken out of it.
That's correct.
But if it's something that we requested afterwards, isn't that added on then, or is that, it's all just part of contingency yet, or?
Well, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have, we have two contingencies that are out there. We have an owner contingency, and then we have the contractor contingency. Typically, something that we request that is outside of the original contract, that we request then comes under the, and falls under the owner's contingency. And, you know, that's why we put, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think it was 250, something, something like that. But, but what we've talked about with them, if you recall early on in this process, there was over $800,000 in contractor contingencies, and, and if you recall right, they even said that, you know, they were hopeful that they wouldn't even use half of that. So what we've been able to do with them is to convince them to, even though this one was a owner request, we're, the change order is coming through, this one I believe is coming through as a contractor contingency deduction.
Okay.
So just if that, if that helps.
Well, that's what, I mean, that's what I'm, I'm saying, I mean, it's, it looks to me like this is.
It's all our money.
Right, it's all our money, that's true, but it would add on to the cost of the bill, you know?
Right. It's something that was not anticipated and.
I mean, I'm glad to see it's coming out of contingency fund, you know, but it looks to me like it's an owner request, not a contractor.
It is, and, and that's a very good point, Commissioner Gross and Madam Chair, if I may. That's something that, as Commissioner Campbell said, we worked out with them fairly early on, because we thought with that many dollars approved already, and we want this project to stay within those costs, that why aren't we using those contingency dollars? We don't care if it's construction money, it's still county money, and they agreed with us. And, so it's, it's worked out really well, and we still, we still have some pretty good contingencies, balance is there, so, yeah, it's been going.
Well, I'm glad it's working that way, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Our number seven item is the request to approve the change of the June 12 meeting time to 5:30.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second, just to clarify that, we have truth and taxation that.
We do.
Okay, great, so that will follow. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Great, committee reports. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Let me get my calendar, let's see, I, we obviously, we had the three days at the Capitol for the AMC Legislative Conference. The Tuesday night, we were there, we met with our local legislators, and went over primarily this discussion regarding the transfer station project that we're jointly in the works on with the city of Moorhead. And then the following day was the day at the Capitol, and I'm going to let my fellow two commissioners who went over there do that, I, I did stay back, and then I did end up going to an opioid presentation that afternoon, and I really didn't get anything that we haven't heard in all of our previous opioid panel discussions before. Then on, on the Wednesday, let's see, Thursday, March 1st, we had our policy committee meetings, and I was at the transportation policy committee, and one of the issues was on the broadband, and there, there are still some speeds that, in some of our rural areas, that are still struggling, and they're trying to find, you know, in that whole process with the rural broadband. And there was a couple of locations on the map that show Clay County as in the red, which is still a struggling area, and so we're working on ultimately trying to do that. The other big topic or discussion was the, the bonding bill. We got an update on that, and from what we heard is they're looking at a potential bonding bill of 800 to 825 million dollars this year. And it's the way it came from both legislative bodies, that both Democrats and Republicans, is that they were both saying that there will be a bonding bill. Those famous words. And, and the discussion was that the majority of the bonding would go to transportation, transportation infrastructure and wastewater projects. That's where the indication has, was where probably the most of those monies would go. And then we did have the jail or the law enforcement center and the correctional facility update, and, and you got the change orders on that, and that continues to just smoothly move along. It's, it's always fun to listen to those guys, and they do have a really good track on, on the, well, the three-week previous and three-week outlook schedule, so it's good news there. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Haney?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On Tuesday last week, as Commissioner Campbell stated, we met with the legislators from the area and discussed the transfer station. And then the next day, we got up early in the morning, and we went up to the Capitol on the Hill, and we attended, or met with several, including the governor's office. We met a senior aide to the governor to talk about this issue. Then we went and met with Representative Erdahl, the House Appropriations Director, Chairman rather, and went on down the line, Alice Hausman from the House Minority Leader. And we also went to Senator Senjum, the Republican leader of the Senate, and we ended up meeting at the end of the day with two, two people from the PCA, and discussed the transfer project with them in every case. Then the next day, on Thursday, I attended the Health and Human Services Policy Committee meeting, and we had feedback from committee members. We discussed policy issues, where there's a bill being discussed before the legislature right now by Representative Matt Dean, that would create a county-based eligibility system for medical assistance and Minnesota Care. And our AMC Director Julie Ring said that she thought that that was likely DOA. She thought that Dayton would not sign it if it was passed. And then there was also another move to institute Medicaid work requirements that would apply to able-bodied adults, and the Dayton administration is also against that. And there's also, and we had an update from Roberta Downing from the federal liaison for that AMC, and she told us that there's also a discussion at the federal level about work requirements for Medicaid, and several other items, and she discussed the farm bill and whatnot. Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Tuesday, we attended the planning commission meeting, there's two different permits, permits there for opening up a new gravel pit there in Highland Grove, and two of the townships are in, and they sort of, they're main, they weren't really opposed to, they're just more concerned about their road usage and stuff like that, that they maintain, would maintain roads, and things, gravel company pretty much said that they would maintain their roads properly and probably even improve them more. And there was another permit for storage buildings in the Glendon Township, and there's some opposition from City of Moorhead on.
More in public service.
The public, the public service on, on their aquifer, being building over the aquifer, a storage building, with maybe housing automobiles, and they were concerned about oil and stuff getting down there, but both permits were approved there. The only, I thought they would be coming to us, that's going to be coming to the planning com, I mean, with the county commission here, isn't it, those permits for approval?
No, once they, no, they, those permits, the action is at the planning commission level.
I guess the one thing I was concerned about there was they, one of the recommendations was that they, they put hours of operation on the guy in the storage shed, and I don't know if we ever.
We did, yep.
I don't know why we would do that, that the person has to, that we would regulate hours of operation for somebody.
We typically do that, and maybe Jenny can chime in, just to avoid having, in the rural, just having customers coming and going 24 hours a day. We, we put hours of operation on all the gravel permits and those issues, but also on any rural businesses.
Okay, because I think he wants to open at 9:00, the permits at 7:00.
Right, and I can talk about that in my committee report, but I met with them the previous day, and their concern was that nobody could be there, but as an operator, you can be there, you just can't have customers coming for customer hours during that time, and they were fine with that.
And then Friday, I attended the Partnership for Health Board, there they discussed a lot on salaries for nurses, which has been a problem here at the county. I mean, it is a county problem, you know, trying to get nurses, you know, just the salaries for them, it's just not, that we can get them here, you know, it's just not, it's a problem, all over the county, all over the four counties that Partnership for Health encompasses, so. And then we also had a speaker, Jason McCoy was there, he talked about vaping and stuff like that. He gave a very good presentation on the different vaping things, you know, if you look at, well, you just look at this thing they attached to the computer here, can't even come up with the name for it now, but chump drive, that's what the vaping devices look like now, and they're using them in high schools now, they, looks like they got a chump drive in their, in their computer. It's really a vaping thing, you know, and that's how they're making them nowadays, and it's just, you could just be vaping right in class already, you know, it's just, it's, it was very interesting, and he gave a very good presentation, and I would recommend that almost every school get him to talk in their school about vaping and stuff like that, it was just very good. They were talking about selling tobacco to 21-years and older and stuff like that. So the problem is if we're, if we're going to enact something like that in our county, I mean, we're going to hurt a lot of people just going across the river and buying, you know, so it's going to be a tough one for, for Clay County to enact 25 and over, Cass County doesn't do it, 21 and over, I said 25. Okay, that's what my meetings were.
Thank you, Commissioner Whelan.
Let's see, I was at the AMC Legislative Session last week, and I think Commissioner Haney already explained where we were, but that all our meetings were pretty positive with the governor's office and the legislators and the PCA. It was pretty obvious that Kirk's done a good job of getting our, our transfer station project on the radar, and I think we'll probably have to make at least one more trip down there to make sure it stays on the radar, but our local legislators have done a good job too, because the other people we met with all understood that this is a priority project for our local legislators. So I, I was pretty encouraged after our meetings there, and hopefully that'll work out for us. And then I had the Public Safety Committee meeting on Thursday, and most of that session was spent discussing the Menlars issue, and I don't know, there's not really any real good news there that I can see. I mean, there's a lot of, every county's upset, you know, there's, they don't seem to have much agreement going on in St. Paul how to deal with the issue, you know, someone to just pump more money and do it. I think the, the one thing I came away with is everybody's pretty concerned that somebody's held accountable for spending $100 million of taxpayer money and then having no results whatsoever, and things just continuing to get worse, so I guess that, we'll just have to see how that plays out. I had the, Kevin already went over the jail construction and law enforcement center construction meeting yesterday. The one thing we did discuss a lot is, is coordinating tours for the public and various people that will have an interest in seeing all the projects going, so that was it for me.
All right. Thank you. Last week, I did attend that planning commission meeting. It was really a lengthy discussion in terms of the storage units and individuals interested in buying the dragway racetrack south of the Moorhead Airport, so if you're familiar with that. And the concerns were really about if there would be restrooms in these four-long buildings, what would the septic look like, would it be a drain field or a tank? And I think Moorhead Public Service was, you know, concerned if it was just a drain field, that it would leach into the aquifer. So I think we had good conversation, that was approved, but the recommendation is to, we really need to work further with MPC, MPC and, and the county in terms of the sanitary services, and I think that we have the regulations in process for that to be good. The second piece, I did recuse myself because of a family-work relationship, and that, that gravel piece did go through. The next day, I did meet with the applicants from the garage in terms of clarification, what they had some questions on that, from what was talked about the night before, and kind of set them up with, with meeting with other individuals to get those questions answered. And then I did meet last week with the new chair of the Buffalo Red Watershed, Jay Leach, in terms of just some updates on the horizon. They had a nice update in the Fargo Forum this weekend on their Wolverton Creek restoration, the Comstock Cooley Project, that's a big project they've been working on for a long time, and we'll see some dirt moving this summer. And then I did get a notification from the Buffalo Red that they had submitted their payment of $25,000 to the River Basin Commission, so just for your knowledge. And then I did get another, just for your information, that from the Minnesota Department of Human Resources, or Human Services, they commended our staff and the Department of Human Services for what their key fiscal reports were. Everything was submitted in perfect order and met the deadlines, so kudos to Rhonda and her staff for getting that done. And just an item that I forgot to report on after the Lakes and Curries meeting two weeks ago, they're doing the VITA tax sites right now, working on people's tax returns, and it's interesting to note that they've completed 167 returns, and close to $500,000 was coming back into the pockets of people, so that's all money that Clay and Wilken County residents, those residents will have in their pocket, which way to spend on things locally, so that's good. And then I just want to note that the Township Officers Meeting is on the 19th, and then if we could. And then if we could please, Colleen, get on the schedule that March twenty-seventh is our small cities, if you want to put that on the upcoming events or meetings on the back of our agenda. Thank you. All right, Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, most of the week, I guess, I'll have to say I was on vacation. I thank you for the opportunity to do that. I did attend Thursday morning, I attended the Joint Powers Committee meeting, and our veteran service officer, Curtis Cannon, gave a presentation on that and did a good job of informing the committee members what their office is all about, and what they were doing for vets and the homeless vets, and were there questions in regards to that. And then we also did review the financial statement of the intergovernmental retreat, and I did place a statement in your mailbox in reference to that. There was a lot of dollars of the, your balance was spent last year on it. It's down to two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. So something will have to change a little bit there next year, different locations and things. So we did conduct a management team meeting last Thursday as well, discussing several issues and going over issues that are going on within the different departments and things, to keep that line of communication open. Surprisingly, I know this is no surprise, I shouldn't say it that way, but a couple personnel issues last week that were dealt with, and hopefully we'll come to some final conclusion pretty soon. Met with Justin in the correctional facility, referenced the new purchases that they'll be making, all of the supplies and different things, and that'll be coming to you in the near future. It's in their FFNE fit-up for the new building, but goes from everywhere, from garbage cans to mattresses. And when you're looking at supplying mattresses to a facility like that, you're looking at purchasing about two-hundred-and-thirty, two-hundred-and-fifty mattresses. So all of the items do add up, and, but they've been budgeted for. So I had the construction meeting, and that's already been addressed, things just keep moving along. It's kind of scary when we're sitting there, not scary, I guess, it's exciting to realize that we're in March, and we're talking, spring is right around the corner, and we're going to start looking at some finishing touches on that. They'll be turning that over to the owners in the June at the law enforcement center. And the same with the correctional facility in July, probably turn it over to the owners for the training purposes and things. So really some exciting times there. Some additional communication on the motor vehicle issue. I think, did you bring back copies, Commissioner Grant?
We have that, yes.
You brought that back. And I'd gotten some feedback, and I did forward those messages to you from our representatives. And, you know, Commissioner Whelan hit it on the nose, he said, there's finger pointing, but there's also, pretty frustrating when you spend a hundred million dollars on something and then it doesn't work. You have to hold somebody accountable. But unfortunately, I think the public needs to know that the public's going to suffer on the services on this. And the long and hard of it, the truth of it, is this is going to be, politics are going to enter into this. You're going to, they're going to play some games with it and point some fingers, and that's too bad, because the citizen is going to lack the services on it. And, I mean, that's with everything, but it's just reality, so we need to, we need to say it. We can't, we can't flower it. And hopefully, we'll get some quality discussion out of that. Spend a little time on that zone fee thing that Lisa presented this morning. I think that's a positive step in the right direction. The septic follow-up, I understand when, last week, and I did watch the video of it, he was in here last week, and that was one of the things I'd written down for follow-up on, and it looks like that's been handled quite successfully, and it was an interesting session, I guess. Yesterday afternoon, I did receive a call from Jerry Van Amber, and I did forward an email to you. Let me hand this out. We can talk about it a little bit.
I don't believe I got that.
No, this was, this was a short while back. Chris Volkers had sent me an email, and this is the email, and I had forwarded on to you folks, and then she was asking me if someone from the county could help her coordinate the logistics and talking points and things. And I did volunteer to do that. I have not heard from her. But Jerry Van Amber called me last night and wanted to make sure that you folks were aware of this. And then he also sent me two links of the agenda, and I have not forwarded that on to you, and also a registration. They'd like to know if you plan to attend this. This is going to be kind of a day-long issue. They said, starting at the Marriott, there will be a bus to pick people up, and including these Minnesota Environmental Quality Board that are coming in here. And then in the afternoon, there will be a program. We meet back and have lunch at the Marriott, and then a program in the afternoon.
Can I just have a question? This is during the base, or the conference, right?
During which conference?
The.
Water.
The Joint Watershed Conference. Red River Watershed Management Board and Basin Flood Damage Reduction. It's the same day, isn't it?
Is it the twenty-first? That I can't.
That's March twenty-first and twenty-second, and I assume that's why they're in town.
That must be why they're in town then, yeah.
So I'm registered for that conference, but this seems like it's a different off-campus tour.
Yeah. This is, is the conference that you're registered for, Madam Chair?
At the Marriott, the twenty-first and twenty-second.
At the Marriott, then it must be connected?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, it must be connected. But this is the first day of it, then, I'll say.
Okay.
So, and I'll forward, so you're already registered on that?
Well, I'm registered for the conference, I just not registered for this EQB board.
Okay, okay. Well, he really was wishing some interaction by the commissioners and the board, so he was really encouraging we could attend that. So I will sign up for it too. And then you asked, Aaron, about the succession planning this morning, and I think that's a very good topic. That's a topic we have addressed in our commissioners and department head meetings in the past. We've tried to have presentations on it, and it sounds like it's a good topic. But unless you've picked your people out, or you have planned for, and can groom them to fill those positions, it's kind of tough in this environment to do that. Plus, we've talked a little bit about that, and we've said, you know, other than training more people in supervision, which we have, we, you, we budget ten million dollars, or ten thousand dollars a year, ten million dollars, ten thousand dollars a year for some leadership training, and we do that every year in preparation of that. But we'll still keep plugging away at that, because we will have some changes. And speaking of changes, and I will probably, I'll submit a letter to you sometime in the near future, maybe a month or so, because, but it's hard to pull out a date and make that final decision, so. But I promised you three months, I think, in the past of notification, and I'll certainly honor that. So we'll keep working on that. Just a comment or an observation on the nurses that I thought, when you were talking about the hard-to-get nurses, you know, and sometimes it's hard, I know, for government to think out of the box and do something, but, you know, just maybe we need to talk about, maybe we have to supply some grant money, or we have to identify certain people that are going to school for, and we would give a scholarship if they would serve with the county for a year or two afterwards. Because this is really, I mean, there's a shortage of nurses, and we just can't get them. And maybe we have to think of doing something different to help that along, and it was just a thought that came to my mind. With that, Madam Chair?
All right. Anything else?
Done.
If not, we are adjourned.